Brian?
Here.
To my cell.
Hey, visitor's comment.
Did they get the email we sent from the township by an address that not everybody?
No, we're, yeah, we did get it into my pocket to discuss with them.
Okay. Are you, we're gonna discuss it later in the meeting?
After the meeting, yes. After the, after the other stuff.
While the meeting's still in?
Yes.
Okay. We can just discuss it then, that's all.
How about you, Joe?
Uh, I'll come up with something later.
All right. Jim? Approve the agenda. Now the second motion to approve the agenda. All right. On favor?
Aye.
We're gonna adjourn the meeting to go in executive session. Okay, we're gonna adjourn the meeting to go in executive session, so we're gonna go in the office. You people are welcome to head out here. Okay. Need a motion to come out of executive session and back in very regular meeting. All right. Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. The DEP issue, we just adjourned it.
About the consent order, need sign. Or sign it next Thursday.
What consent order?
Yeah, what consent order?
Well, the consent order for all the violations.
He didn't tell us about it.
Is this, is it executive session?
It matters, we cannot discuss.
Well, why is it on, it's down here's new business, then?
It's DEP issue, so we're taking on that one, I see.
We don't have enough information.
You just can't take an acid like that and not sign it without knowing what's going on.
You don't wanna tell the public, it's not the truth.
No, it's the public. Oh, trust me, the public will know next Thursday.
Yeah.
They'll know it all, so.
And what costs?
It's being tabled until Thursday.
Okay, can we, can I just ask a couple questions?
Sure.
I'm not gonna ask you specifically about the consent.
No, go ahead.
I want, I mean, I was, you were involved with the order. Christine, you were there during consent order.
Is that the one where Poppy talked?
No, no, this is a new one, I guess, but having, before you sign it, before you get that far, do you know the costs associated with it? Because I know that we didn't when we signed the one that we had.
They don't give you a cost.
No, no, DEP won't.
They won't give you a cost.
They could at least get you a ballpark estimate of what it's gonna cost. And then, once you sign it, as we found out, you're stuck with everything you signed for.
Oh, no doubt, yep.
If you have the ability to, through your engineer or through your own organization, to negotiate something before you sign it.
Yep.
That's what we talk about.
That's what you're doing.
Okay.
We have to talk.
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I have no idea what's going on there, but if there's things like, when we had hours where we had to update the plant, do work at the well, I mean, it ended up costing almost a million dollars all said and done. You don't wanna sign something like that without knowing the cost.
Where is the engineer, shouldn't he be there?
Does the Eads group, do they look at it for you? Do you know what?
The Eads group is supposed to give us, I bounced them about this bill last month, okay? I'm not real happy with Brian, which I've got to tell everybody, I am not happy with Brian. So, what I wanna tell you is, he's half the problem with this consent form. So, I asked Brian about this bill, and I said, I wanna know what we paid for $1,100. So, he sends me this thing, a review, reviewing emergency response and plan, reviewing consent degree. So, back in the third month, he has already went over this. It actually says 4121. Okay, so he's already went back and he says he discussed, he reviewed the consent form. So, he should have already gave us his opinion of it. You understand what I mean?
But you don't have it?
I don't know, I never seen it. I don't think we ever have it.
I don't know.
So, we are going to contact him, and I want a full report. We already paid for it. I want his full report, okay? Because if you know, I sent a right-to-know act to the township for the insurance. We all should have a liability insurance from him, even the township. How much is he doing on the bridge down there? And you guys have no insurance, I know that. This is what I got back, right here. Can you sign this?
I sign it?
Yep.
We did.
Because it's about force.
It's about, oh, force.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, it's a, it's a contract he was able to get. Your name is on it.
I don't understand why now you can't tell us tentatively what you're supposed to consent to. I mean, I wanna know, what did we do wrong that they want us to correct? I'm asking the chair.
We're, we're still, we're still talking about it. We're still talking about it, trying to get things, like you said, engineer, trying to get everything ironed out, all ducks in a row, so when we do talk about it, everything is right, true, and correct.
So, are we talking about, let's say, 10 things we may have done wrong? Five?
No, if you go on a lot, if you can get into-
About 85.
About 85.
Get into DEP, so you'll see all Patrick.
Drinking waters.
It's been going on since 2017.
It's violations that have been happening.
Since 2017.
Why can't you just say that? It's violations.
I tried to say that, I wasn't speaking. It's been going on since 2017. There's at least 75 or more violations here. And the last one, when they went to the well, was the big one. So, right now, I'm looking to see if they even had a reason to do it at that time, because I don't see any.
So, all the violations, Brian, were sent to Brian Bloom, and he's not saying nothing, love?
No, they were sent to Patrick too. Brian Bloom and Patrick.
They should be sent right here.
Yeah. Were they sent here?
That, I don't know.
Violation, huh?
No, we didn't get fined. We don't have no violation to fine.
There are violations.
Wait a minute.
The whole thing is a violation.
I don't know.
Let me, let me ask a question. When I was the chairperson, anytime there was an abnormality, oh, what was the guy's name? Anyway, the sanitaryant at the time, and he's not your sanitaryant now, would come to me, and I'd, and he'd have to review the whole problem with me, and then I'd have to sign for it, and I didn't copy it, okay? Anytime there was an incident, somebody has to sign that paperwork from the sanitaryant. Do you sign that?
I haven't signed anything.
Has anybody ever signed anything with the sanitaryant being notified with the problem?
Patrick had his name down, too.
Well, I'm just asking.
I, I never received any.
Somebody should have been, if there was that many issues, I'm sure the sanitaryant brought them to attention, somebody's attention, if somebody should have-
Why didn't, why didn't they bring them then?
Well, I, I don't know why.
Amazing, they did.
Alan, Alan Foyer was our sanitaryant, and I don't know who you have now.
They, they were appointed to the board.
But I had to sign every time there was an issue in the system, he would come to me and review it, and then I'd have to sign.
One thing, they were appointed to the board at one time or another, because a lot of them were revolved. They give you your, what you did wrong, then you have the chance over here to-
Resolve it.
Resolve them.
Right.
If you can. There's some that you can't. Now, there's a, there's a whole bunch here that we, that he did go back and resolve, all the way back from 2017.
Somebody had to be notified in writing for that to occur, that's what I'm saying.
See, these ones here say chief, chief, chief.
I saw one.
And then we had time to remedy it.
Yeah.
And I don't know who was signing for that at this time.
I don't know. Alls I know is, I just got it off the internet, and I seen what was going on right there.
So, there's some on there that have to still be resolved, is that what?
There's some that can't be resolved. How can I resolve a boiling water notice? If I was supposed to put about a boiling water notice to you, how, how am I gonna resolve that? I can't resolve that. See what I'm saying? That's totally impossible to resolve.
Right.
So, you can't do it.
But is DEP asking for some resolutions?
Well, this, this is the resolution. What are we gonna do about it? What are we gonna do about this? It, you know, it should have been stopped.
If there's anything infrastructure-related, then you're looking at big money. You know that.
I don't, I really-
Is that where you want your engineers to come from?
No, wait, for what I, well, that, he's never gave us the report. We paid for it, and which, we will send him a notice to get it.
Paul looked tonight, tell me not to ignore it.
We, we paid for it, because I asked for it. It says consent form right on.
This is a special payment.
Fran, 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 this is, I mean, this is all attorney stuff.
I think it's attorney, that's, no, it ain't. That's local stuff.
All the stuff that hasn't been ironed out.
And you're walking on real shallow water, if you're not letting the community know what's going on.
The community will know everything next Thursday. Ain't gonna be no after no fact, and sign nothing yet.
When did you first-
Somebody that heard.
Say you're signing it next week.
Well, that's what we're beginning by.
Means we're talking about it. You have a timeline.
It's been tabled, that part's done, visitor's comments are done, electricity agreement number two, let's move on.
When did you first get a letter from DEP that said they are, they put you under a consent agreement? When did you get the letter?
The first time.
The first time we had, we were notified by James Devitorial. James Devitorial was not our lawyer. So, when we, they called, we were instructed to just deal with our attorneys, deal with their attorneys. That is it.
That was February 16th of '21.
But you have a copy of that letter. You don't have a copy of that letter?
It was done by email.
Doesn't make any difference. You do not have a copy of the first letter from DEP, say they may be placing you on-
DEP got it through, it went through our attorney, James Devitorial. It did not come here, it went through James Devitorial. He was our attorney at the time. He switched it over and talked to, until he gave it to our other lawyer.
Well, how would DEP know who your lawyer is?
Because of the things that were going on in there, he was taking care of it.
But you all weren't notified individually? Like, you got an email at the office that you gave to each board member so they were aware that this was going on in February? Were you all aware of this in February?
Yeah, this is February.
February, no.
No, this is found out in July.
All of you should have had copies of that letter. I don't know why since February you haven't gotten it. This is very strange. Very strange.
If there's any, if there's any copies, I'm sure you have them, there's everything.
Alls I know.
Everything? Yeah, because it was through Devitorial. I got the call from DEP, we're not allowed to contact them. I had to give our attorney's name, and that was through the attorneys.
But the attorney didn't send you anything?
But, but you know what?
Like I said, she'll, she'll find it.
It's Devitorial.
The bottom, the bottom line is, each one of you members is responsible, and we live in the township, and we're probably gonna be paying the cost.
Right.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Well, you should have done more research and got the information directly from DEP instead of email or this one or that one. Why didn't you want the letter?
I didn't know there was a letter, Christine, until tonight.
No, this is-
Until the other month.
Until tonight?
Until, I knew the consent order, 7-1, we got it, Christine, Gus and I. The other board members knew it, but we didn't. That's why I'm mad.
We just read that on the last meeting, we had to come in early.
But you knew about it.
During COVID, our attorney had provided off.
You're like, no, I'm good.
Family had COVID, there's a lot of things that they just, he didn't act on quickly. I can honestly say that.
How many times have you been working with the attorney through the attorney? Since February, have you been going back and forth to the attorney? Or are you just letting the attorney do it?
Well, it was a transition from one attorney to the other, you know?
That happened.
They have been working through the attorneys and stuff like that.
Who has been submitting the changes to the attorney on the, about this?
Attorney doesn't work on legal, I mean, on the technical matters. Who's working on the technical matters?
That's a good question. Who's on it?
Brian, far as I know, in the first part.
It's not your engineering, is it? Is it Eads that's working on the technical?
Yes, most certainly. Has to be, right here. He's been working on it since 3-1.
You should know, you guys are the board.
I'm just going by what I've been checking.
What we just heard from the attorney is that Patrick's been negotiating-
He's been working with us.
The COA with the attorney.
So, he's been getting all the-
Patrick's been doing this by himself?
Yeah, he said with Sharon.
I have not been involved in it. Yes has been involved in it, and so has, I'm not answering any more questions at some time.
Well, that's, that's ill of Sharon. You're looking pretty guilty.
That's not fair. That is not fair. Stop.
Okay, that's enough.
As a user-
It's just-
You can try to do what, but don't tell her she's done something wrong.
Listen, listen.
As a user, I don't care what your attorney says.
Right.
You better not sign this consent agreement at your next meeting until you owe all of us more information at cost.
And that's why we're waiting.
They only, they only-
Well, you said you canceled it to the next meeting, you're not approving it.
And I wouldn't sign anything without consulting. You think your engineering firms working on it? Was Patrick working on it? Was Sharon working on it? You were the board members.
Right, right.
That's an employee.
It'll be a grand job.
You were the ones responsible for what decisions you approved.
We are going to call the engineer and ask him where his report is. He made a report, and I'd never seen it. I want his report.
Why didn't the township see a copy of it? After it's signed, is that when we can see a copy of it?
Come next Thursday, we'll give you a copy of it.
But you're already gonna have it signed by then. What if there's opinions and people to consult?
They won't take no more out of it.
That's what she said.
She already said, they, they went over it, and they took so many, they took some stuff out of it, and that's as far as DEP's gonna take out of it.
That's what she said. That's what our attorney said.
That's what she said.
You better get the costs of what it is they're forcing us to sign.
Well, this is why I gotta get this copy that we already paid for from the Eads group, our engineer, to see what he come up with.
So, are the things that are left are going to be quite expensive? Is that what you're thinking?
I have no idea. No, most of them is he missed checks. I don't know why, but he missed checks.
I talked to Brian today, and he said that he will have a cost estimate by Monday or Tuesday for us.
Value to report, value to report to those.
Oh, 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 value to report, yeah.
That's, I mean, it can't, it's nothing, I don't think it's gonna be a lot of manly stuff or equipment stuff at all, because this stuff here is, is simple stuff. It just wasn't being done, and I don't know why.
Well-
I don't know why.
Lack of-
No, it didn't get done.
Well, that's enough of Patrick. All of mine is this board is responsible.
Yes, you're right, Christine.
Well, Christine.
What's past is past.
Christine, what is past is past, and we will take care of it. So, I've asked you to settle down, because I just come up with this too in the last year. So, now I know, I see what's happened in the past. So, settle down till we look at it, and I contact the engineer, and I, we will come to the bottom of it. Till then, I don't wanna hear no more from her, because that's that.
All right, let's, let's move on to a new business, the electricity, let's hear about that.
Okay, um, I checked with our, um, we were paying over 11 cents for our electricity. Now, we, I went through APII, and they recommend to go to energy, and where it's a six, it's a five-year agreement. It'll be six cents, five cents, five cents, five cents, and five cents over three, over five years per electricity at the plant and all our, all our buildings. So, if the board is in agreement with that, that's a recommendation. It's through Pennsylvania Rural Water Association. We've been paying tax on our electricity, and we are not supposed to. They are gonna work with us as much as possible to go back at least two years to get our tax back. But they said with Think Energy that we have now, that I don't know when it was put on our bills. I wasn't involved in that. I don't know. We have to work with them, and they said they're not a part of Pennsylvania Rural Water. So, they have a tendency not to work with them, so I'm gonna probably have to do a lot of the legwork, and Pennsylvania Rural Water Association will help me do that to the best of their ability to get our taxes.
Yeah, whenever you get a chance.
So, I just need a motion to approve this and have our chairman sign it so we can get it in by the end of July. So, it takes effect in August, we will be cut our bills, and we won't be paying taxes anymore.
Is it, are there any hidden fees there, Sharon? Sometimes those-
No, but Pennsylvania Rural Water really works with them, and he said this is upfront, this is what they work for. And sometimes when you go to outside businesses that without Pennsylvania Rural Water, they say one thing, and then they just change the price, and it's higher. But Pennsylvania Rural Water, which we are a member of, he says helps, his name is Noel Temple. Noel, Noel's his first name, and I've been dealing with him, Noel Temple. And API, API is affiliated with the Pennsylvania Rural that we're a member of.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so we need a motion to approve the electricity agreement.
And have the chairman sign.
Have the chairman sign. Can I have that one? Come here.
I'll second it.
Gus second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All vote. Motion's there. Okay, you need a, you need a motion?
Wait, 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 wait.
Before you adjourn, I have that question.
Yeah, that other question, yes.
We sent everybody an email. We sent the-
Well, I got an email here. It says at tonight's meeting, is that someone? I have it here, seriously. My supervisor, my supervisors met with a management company, Infomark, last week. This company manages water and sewage facilities. Their supervisor, their supervisors are asking your board to set up a time within the first couple weeks of August for two representatives of this company and my supervisors to be able to look at the water plant. This is for them to see the operations of the plant. This is just to keep the super, to help the supervisors be able to get more information. You have any questions, you can call the supervisors.
Okay. So, I'm gonna explain to you what the company is. It's called Infomark, like it says in there.
How do you spell that?
I-N-F-R-A-mark, M-A-R-K. They are strictly an operations management firm. They don't run the office, they don't run the billing, they don't, but they'll hire, they'll come in and look over the facility, is what they wanna do. Here and this sort, we are, we're asking both to look it over. And for a flat yearly fee, they will run all the water treatment operations, sewer treatment operations, including the maintenance people. They become their employee, so they'll be employees in Infomark. They would get, depending on what the need is, that they'll have a salary, retirement, which is 401K, health insurance, they pay for all their education, they give them incentives when they make a new classification. They have an office based out of Johnstown. They have support. So, in the situation like you're talking about right now, their computer system will be linked to ours. If something popped up unusual, they would have somebody calling you from Johnstown saying, hey, you know, we gotta get this in today, or go, you know, they have a whole system of checks and balances and a whole group of people that all they do every day is what waste water and what. They, what we're asking for is just to see, they wanna see the facility so they can tell us how much that would cost per year. I know you don't have operators right now. I know with this sewer, you know, Cory's working towards a license, but you also have an, they have an outside operator, so it's a, it's a really good company. From what I've gathered on it so far, everything stays in control, local control, except for the employees become their employees, and responsibility with the DEP and all of this that comes with it is their responsibility. They have 300 municipalities that they represent from coast to coast. Evansburg and Johnstown are the two nearest that they operate to us. Any one of you that would wanna be here to meet with them, I'm sure they'd give you the time to explain it all before you shove it around, and like I told Sharon, I'm sure they're gonna want Dennis. I guess Dennis is your guy right now.
Dennis can stop on Friday's Saturday.
And they manage everything, Karen?
They manage everything to do with treatment of water. The secretary still stays an employee of the authority, handle rates are set by the authority, the billing is handled by the authority. Any projects, like you just had in force, that you wanted to out the bid on, would go through the authority, but they have people to help you with that as well, as far as grant writing and, like, I got on the guy's email just from these conversations, and I got a notice of grant money that's out there right now for wastewater treatment, okay? They did, you just automatically get it when you're on the system.
What about personnel?
The personnel are there, they'll hire the personnel. They become Infomark.
That's gonna be a safer word.
They're probably gonna get paid as good, if not better, than what we're paying.
You mean the same employees who stay in the water source?
Right, right. They'll, I mean, they said they'd like to keep the same people that we, that they have, and then help with their people will help them get to where they need to be. He said on occasion, and this is a very rare occasion, somebody does, is not fit, they'll say, hey, we can't.
Yeah.
You know, he said even if they say this guy's not an operator, they would still keep him maybe as maintenance or something like that. They'll talk to you about all that gladly. We just met with them last week to get the general information, and after the meeting, he said the next step would be to see what we have going on so they can put a price for it.
And you, you guys as supervisors, you three supervisors are who decided to contact these people to get them to come?
Right, yeah. And we went through the meeting with that, last couple meetings that we were talking. Just as, and solely as informational, like I told Sharon, they might come back with a number so big that we go,
Oh, yeah.
we can't afford this, you know what I mean?
I understand.
But right now, without having licensed people, it's a really good time to look into it.
Yeah, well, that's another thing before we go out of here, do.
We gotta take care of this.
Okay, take care of that. Oh, go ahead.
So, is that something that anybody's opposed to, is to let them just come and look to, meet with Dennis so that they can?
I, I have no problem as long as the rest of the board-
It's solely to arrive at a number so we know where that would be, you know what I mean?
Talk about it, get an idea.
What about the boards, Sharon?
What about the boards? If they're still in authority, then they're still board, you know what I mean? That's, that's the way that works. We have to get, we don't even know if we can afford this much. But once we found them, this is like something definitely worth looking into.
They would want Dennis to be there, right?
I would assume, because he's, unless Patrick's here, and I know that depending on what time of the day-
Dennis is the responsibility, try to set it up with Dennis.
Somebody that, that has knowledge of the system in case they have questions about it.
Yes, I wouldn't have-
Just have to give us time so we get with Dennis.
I was, I would have to contact him. He'll be back, and I can contact him and see when he will be up here to do that. If the board is going to do that.
Yeah, if you can find out if they're, if they're in agreement, just to let them in to see the facilities. Just let Jamie know when, when Dennis is available, and then she can send the email back through the chain, you know? Surely, she can even copy you on us, you know what's going back.
Yeah, Dennis will be here back, so.
And you have the name?
Jeremy, this sounds like a rate increase.
He's talking, no, it's different.
This is just planning stage, right?
No, the rates are already high, bud.
It's too high.
I mean, the rates are already high. I don't know what it's gonna cost, because we can't even say if it would require a rate increase or not, and that's where we're at. We want to see people qualified so that we're not in this situation.
There's a couple, there's a couple.
This isn't the first time. I mean, it's been going on forever.
And we don't want it to go on forever. That's what I'm getting at, yeah. That's the only reason that we're talking to this company, to see if it's possible.
When I came on, it was like that, and it's been nothing but-
Right, right. And we're not, I'm not saying it hasn't been, but that's the thing that I wanna stop. I think we all wanna see stopped, that it keeps going around and rounding around like that. Anyway.
I agree.
So, I'll contact him on Monday, Dennis, and so on, see when he's available.
All right.
If that's agreement with the board.
I mean, as far as the board members, you and Fran, he's probably the better guy, so I'm just going with him.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make one when he comes too, so just put my name down when he comes.
Right. Right.
Okay, the only thing I wanna-
I'm gonna make a motion that we meet with these people on the date you said they're gonna come. What, I mean, or you gotta set up a date.
Yeah, when she gets us a date, we'll send it to them. I, we'll get them to work out.
All right, and then, and- All right, and then, and have the
Our operator, licensed operator, and Gus, if you have the time.
I'll make the time.
To meet with them, yeah, and, you know, see if they have a second. How about a second on that?
Second.
Okay, I'll make the first motion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all come.
You're calling, Sharon? You're calling?
Okay, now, before we adjourn.
Is someone on the phone?
I do.
Who?
Jack, I do.
Okay, guess what we're saying?
Uh, before we adjourn, we have these two people that are licensed operators. Uh, I think we want to leave them on an email or a phone call, that our next meeting is next Thursday, that they would like to come and talk to us about this water treatment job. So, I think we should send that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, two for, we got two of them here, and one, one is already coming from Clearfield, he already come and talked to them, and seen the plant and everything, so he's very interested, but then we have another one, so. I'd best this as soon as possible, because we're going to need them to get over this crap. Yes, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
How much is seeing them before you talk to the company about it?
There is, um, there is all, you all have a copy of their application.
Yes, I do.
And, you know, we don't need to, we need to set.
This one here is junk, we can throw that away.
Yeah, that one is junk.
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Please, this is, all in favor?
Aye.